So I would like to welcome Dr Rahul Marathi, who is the founder and director of Mitra Kira Bio Solutions. He is a scientist in the field of entomology, which in which we study the about the insects and around that only we do research. Other than that, he has done many ongoing projects. One of his most important discoveries is plastic eating insects. Plastic is a very big problem in today's life and he has discovered these insects, larvas, which can, which converted to manure. Other than that, he has also helped Indian Air Force Pune, I mean Indian Air Force in, in reducing the risk of bird hits. A lot of time airplanes crash with the birds which results in accidents. So it has, he has helped them reduce by eighty percent and they are reduced and they are using that in every base station. Other than that, he has also helped DRDO in explosive and propellant degradation. Explosive detection using insects is one of, one of his more another discovery. And now I'd like to, yeah, one more thing that you can, you all can put your questions in the chat box or you can directly ask them once sir is done with this session. So now I'd welcome Dr Rahul sir to address the students and clerk.
Thank you, Prashant. Thank you ma'am. Thank you symbiosis management for allowing me to share my views about insects. So the first thing which comes through the mind is when you see an insect, you need, you feel like killing it. But when I see an insect, I feel loving it because it's giving us a lot of options. I call it as a biomimicry. And so presently, I just heard about so many institutes have come together and just except for the life science, no other institute is connected directly with the insect. But now I'll connect all the institutes together with insects. So that's going to be a fun for you. And then I know there are so many projects which will, you would think of taking it ahead and you may think of so many other ideas and it could be a startup idea, it could be so, I mean, let's see how to explore all these possibilities. Right, so I'll just share a presentation. So today we'll be just talking about the fascinating world of insects and I'll be taking you through the entire world where these guys are known to be very, you know, very specific about doing their job. And if you can compare like ma'am was saying, we think we are the superior on this planet, but I feel insects are much more superior. If I have to compare the total biodiversity, you'll see of the total biodiversity on this planet, seventy percent are insects. So that's a huge amount and this entire seventy percent is neglected. So you can imagine how much yet is to be explored and how we can get connected to them. So there's a small first video, I mean audio. So there were two mosquitoes talking and they were saying something. So it was a dad and a kid mosquito and they were saying something. So were you able to hear that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You are audible.
Yeah. So just now there was a buzz about two mosquitoes, they were talking to each other. And if I say that I could decode a language of a mosquito and I can understand what they are saying. So the dad was saying, he was asking a son that how was your first flight? And this guy was saying, okay, everyone was clapping for me. So that was the thing. So what I'm doing is I am also learning language of mosquitoes. So why am I learning the language of mosquitoes? Because everyone knows ki, most deadliest thing on this planet is the dengue because the major casualty happens because of the dengue. I'm not worried about Corona, but I'm much more worried about the dengue which will come in future, in next few months. So Corona is nothing, but dengue is the deadliest on this planet. So we have to worry about mosquitoes which will be coming ahead. Because as the mosquito called Aedes which is going to transmit this and Aedes is a day biter. So we need to understand what mosquitoes are. So and I can say that mosquitoes have ninety-six odor sensors, right? So that's the beauty in this small insect, small mosquito, you get more than ninety-six odor senses. So you can imagine if I have to put it so. If I ask you, what is a sensor? So you show me a big piece of electronic gadget which is called as a sensor. Now if I say you put altogether ninety-six sensors together, so what would be the size of your device? So it could be more than a feet, you will show me one big PCB, you need to connect everything and that entire device will be such a big box. But my mosquito has only small string which is less than an mm and that has ninety-six odor sensors put together. So that's the beauty of these mosquitoes or the insects. And that, that's where you know, you get a good amount of understanding and how microsensors or how small things can be made. So then you have a nanotechnology which is coming up. So how to integrate this nanotechnology? So people who are into VLC or embedded technologies, how they can prepare their designing about preparing a particular sensor or a particular chip. So ideally, a chip design can mimic the designs from or the, you know, all, all the sensors put together inside an insect. So that's the beauty of this entire insect world. Now, just for curiosity, the few people would say ki, we get mosquito bites and few would say that we don't get bites. You know why? Because there are certain people who would give out a particular scent and these mosquitoes are, you know, they get attracted to that particular scent. So even if you have two peoples sleeping next to each other and one fellow is, would be, I mean, the mosquitoes would really, you know, really go behind them, the other one would be sleeping peacefully. So what actually happens is mosquito right from see more than ten to fifty meters, he can sense you. So he'll first check out for the CO2, that's a carbon dioxide which we give out. So then the next it will, he'll come close, that's the first time the mosquitoes want to see a human. So that's the thermal image, the particularly you'll see a human from say ten meters and then less than twenty centimeters when he goes close by, he can see the thermal plume. So that's a typical character where it can sense. So here itself we will see three sensors are working together and this gives a particular, you know, you know, the place where the mosquito can be, rather mosquito gets attracted for towards the humans. Now there's a something called mosquito management. So what I'm trying to understand is the language of a mosquito and whether I can use a technique what very old story of a pied piper did, I can replay that and I can, first is that I replayed, I can understand the language and then call the mosquitoes, either I can call or I can shoot them out. So this is going to be the future trend of mosquito management. Because you are, you know, even if you use a lot of chemicals, they are resistant to that and then you have, then there is nothing left to control the mosquitoes. So now these technologies are going to happen and you need artificial intelligence, you need machine learning. So we are already doing all these projects and so I'm trying to figure out that what is the best possible language? So I figured out more than sixteen different types of languages mosquito speaks. So like what we speak, I speak Hindi, I speak English, I speak Marathi. So other than those three languages finished, but these guys speak more than sixteen languages. So that's how these guys are, you know, much more intelligent than us. Then something about honeybees. So everyone is fascinated about honeybees and so honeybee is total put together the mathematician and in engineering and economist, everything. So we can learn so many things from a only single honeybee. So because this is much more connected to us because of honey, medicinal properties and so on. But there are equally similar, so many other insects which do similar kind of an activity. So I would say this is the oldest mathematician because the honeybees have come much, much before humans have stepped on this planet. So during that time, they knew what the mathematics is because they would prepare this hexagon. A precise engineering model and so I'll tell you now what the mathematics is behind or what is the science behind preparing the hexagons. Why have they chosen to have hexagon and not any other shape? So there's a polygon which interior angles must be divided into three sixty. Right, so regular triangle works with three sixty, divide with sixty, there is six squares put together. So you can see over here the entire mathematics. And so they have just figured out that what is the best combination I can use to have my hive very stable as well as I can store a lot of honey in it. Also, I can have my own house. So the honeycomb is a typical house for honeybee. So in this way, then many other insects have this kind of engineering, this kind of a civil engineering. A lot of mathematics is involved. So they do a lot of mathematics in understanding or building their house. So what we also do, so I cannot do my own job. So I have to hire an architect. I have to hire a civil engineer, I have to hire so many people. So but honeybee is doing this job in one go. And she doesn't, or honeybee is not going to hire any cockroach to do the work for him. So nor they are going to hire anyone else. But honeybees do their job. That means you can see the intelligence build in these honeybees. So similarly, there are so many other insects which build, for example, a potter wasp. So potter wasps builds their own house. That's a typical pot. So what's the engineering, what's the civil engineering behind it? How does it manage us to find out the curve? How does it manage to have the pot? So like if you see a potter, he would like have a wheel and then he will plait on the mud and then he'll start preparing the pot. But if I decide tomorrow to prepare a pot, I won't be able to do it because I don't know the technique. But these guys know everything. So that's the beauty. And they can build, they do not forget their own house. If I have to find any new place, I will totally rely on Google Baba. So that's a Google. But these guys have their own orientation. So they could find their own way in this whole big world. So they know how to reach their house, they know how to go and find the food. So precisely, that's the language of a honeybee. So she comes and tells the other members that, that's a typical dance they will do. And she'll tell others that okay, from here with reference to the sun, the food is available at ninety degrees. So food is available at one forty degrees or whatever the degrees are. So these guys would work sunrise to sunset. And because of the based on the orientation of the sun, these guys tell us or they tell the hive members the where the food source is. And so you can see and there, honeybees also display a good sign of social behavior because the queen takes care of the entire hive. So thousands and thousands and thousands of bees staying together and one single queen is, you know, managing them. So that's a beautiful way of understanding how management is done. Right, so management students can learn a lot of things from honeybees. They can learn from termites, they can learn from many other insects about management. Marketing students can learn a lot of things from butterflies. So like this, you know, there's so many things we, you know, try to understand how nature works and that's a typical biomimicry which we can understand and can implement in our day-to-day lives. So this is one thing what a honeybee does. So it will go and collect a lot of pollens in that she'll do the pollination. But my one more concept, what I am doing, one project is called as Ento Victory. So this is something I am telling a honeybee to carry the microbes, drop it on the flower or the plant so that the pest on the plant will go and the honeybee does pollination, she comes back. So the honeybee is now going to do the job of pollination, of bringing the pollens, prepare the honey and also an additional job of, you know, sending the microbes to the plants for pest management. So that's a total new dimension, probably one of its kind in India which I'm doing. And this is how the honeybees will be doing the job for us for pest management. So it's a very good alternative for pesticides. So we don't require any pesticides in school. So you can just go on releasing honeybees. So they are going to do the job of a postman, so just to deliver and come back. So there's a fantastic way we could really make use of the technologies or make use of these insects without, you know, damaging or harming the nature or imbalancing the nature and so on. So how much honey to or in which place I can store honey well? Or so this gives an idea about how should be our storage system. So there's a patent filed by one of the companies under the name of a Hexit cell technology. Because this hexagon tells or gives us a fair idea of the maximum coverage or maximum area to be occupied or the space could be used for stacking. So that is also one good example. So we can store for, for honeybee it is a storage, but for occupy maximum storage and you can keep, you know, warehouses. In warehouses also you can use these technologies. So that's the beauty. Then there's something interesting that what we see and what a honeybee sees. And you will, you know, for a white color flower, what we see, honeybee sees it in blue. That's a very interesting part. So if I have to call honeybee, so what kind of flowers I should have in my garden? So if I have a plant to white color, so honeybees can see blue and they will come and, you know, they will come and do the pollination. So for humans, we see yellow, they will see white and red. So what humans sees violet, they see green. This is a fantastic and very interesting what honeybee sees and what we see. Honeybees are also explored, find out the explosives. And so this concept was a bit old, but nevertheless it didn't go much further in other countries because they have limitations for the temperature control of the honeybees. For us, it is really good and I've been exploring honeybees and other insects for detection of explosives in our DRDO. So I've been doing this project for almost a year and we are getting a very good success on that. And slowly maybe in next month, by next March, we'll be in position to come out with an, that's called as an ED key. That's a explosive detection device, a kit. And so we will be doing a lot of activities with bomb disposals and, you know, airport scenarios and lot of things. So we can very easily find out the explosives to parts per trillion. So that's very interesting. So presently, the whatever the present technologies are, they are not able to go beyond certain limit because of the technologies, but mines can do wonders. So here is something very interesting. There's a small, you know, it's called as a mega. So normally you will find this mega in any dustbins or, you know, garbage areas. So they do have small eyes, less than a three mm and the total size is less than ten mm. For a small mega, you can imagine the guava, sorry, the guava or a fruit, if you cut a fruit, you'll find some, you know, these crawly creeps coming out of it and the white color ones. So that's the smallest eye you can see and this eye does a fantastic job of showing them the way. So can I have, can I prepare similar kind of a eye or artificial eye or kind of a lens which can take me through the entire fruit or anywhere to find out? So the idea is presently there's a big issue of, you know, to find out the sewer lines, the cleaning of sewer lines. So we don't get people to go down because now, because no one is so comfortable in going down the sewer lines and trying to find where the drainage has been choked or blocked and what is there. So can we have some kind of alternative or a bee or a wasp or something or a small entomocopter? That's called as an entomocopter, I call it as a, not a helicopter, but an insect helicopter. So which has a similar eyes and the image is being transmitted to us and we know where the drainage is being choked and we can very precisely go and do the repairs. Otherwise, it's a huge task and very difficult task to go and clean the drain lines. So can our entomo vectors go and entomocopters go inside the drains where you don't need to send a human? So similarly, you can use it in, you know, the mines to find out any other activities, what is going on below the mines. So you can, you can, you know, save a human life using this kind of a concept. Building some small artificial, small toys, actually I call it as a toys. So you can have some kind of a toys which can do a job for us. So we don't actually harm any insect, but we mimic that insect. If I have to build and, you know, the insect have componentized and simplified. So there are two different kinds. So out of which the components are the eyes which have, so hundred eyes put together builds one eye of an insect. So you can imagine hundred digital cameras put together. So that's one eye of an insect. If I have to have a similar eye in humans, you can imagine I need to have one meter big round which is equal to insect eye, a component, a component of an insect. So that's how it is, it is. So here you can see the simple eye, that is normally we have or a vertebrates will have. So it's just a lens and a receptor, the light falls on the lens and we can receive. Then you have simple corneal eyes where the, the eye, the second one is the eye of a spider. Right, and the third one is the eye of an insect. You can see so many put together. So you have a big array of eyes put together and that makes them, you know, they can really capture a lot of information, almost three sixty degrees. Apart from honeybees, there were some people who have tried about grasshoppers. So this is a big pest for us, but nevertheless can be used also in finding explosives and now similar thing, if I can make use of this insect, instead of explosive, I can use him to find out the pest. So I can have something called as an early warning system for the pest. So I can use this in agriculture where the people can, you know, the farmers can predict early pest attacks. So they can save their crop. So similar kind of a system we can use to find out the, you know, pest attacks scenarios much, much early by using artificial intelligence and machine learning designs. Also, the people from the culinary division, I can say that we can have India's first cricket burger also. Then what can we, you know, we need to understand, this is like, there's a, there's an insect called as a worldly geek beetle. So this is that worldly or water beetle. So that has a beautiful way, it goes dives down. And if we really understand or study how it dives and what it actually does, so our divers can perform much better. So presently, if you see there, there is not a single Indian diver or a national swimmer is getting any medals in our Olympics. But if you really work hard on this to find out how we can improvise on our diving or the swimming skills using a mimicry of insects, because many times of mimicry is used by dolphins or fish mimicries. But in insects also, they are performing much better. Presently in Pune or mostly metros, you'll find they are doing a lot of job of preparing tunnels for the metros. So this entire understanding was based on this small mole cricket. So the biomimicry is about the mole cricket, how it digs below the hard surfaces also. So that's very interesting and fascinating that the entire huge technology of preparing a tunnel below the ground is based on this small cricket, as well as a mole cricket, but the front lane modified for digging. So that's the beauty, even if the soil is hard, where we cannot dig it so easily, this guy can, this guy can dig it very easily and within few seconds he will go below the soil and so that gives, you know, you can really understand or you can prepare some, some kind of a device similar in action which can dig below the soil. As I was mentioning that bird head problems, we did very successfully in Indian Air Force, Indian Navy, Indian Coast Guard. So wherever we have airbase, we have, we have done this. So the beauty is one small one mm fly can take care of this entire big air clean. So you can imagine how it is done. So I release this hardly one mm wasp which goes and infects the caterpillars or the butterflies or the food base which is present. So naturally it controls the food, you know, supply which the food, it cuts down the food supply. That's where the birds don't come and the big birds don't come because there is no small birds. So automatically what happens is this bird start migrating because of the scarcity of food. And I create a natural care of scarcity because I don't, you know, we don't intervene by using any other methods. So we use our biological methods. So that's how we are very successful in going ahead with this and without damaging or without imbalancing any environment, we could really get a good hold on the reduction of bird population, ultimately reducing the bird hits. So you can imagine if a bird hits this one particular fighter, so what is the loss? So now they have invited me to take care of the raffles. So that's my next job. So this insects also do a lot of wonderful job as I told ki, this is explosive and you can see the small caterpillar. I mean, it's a larva which is going inside and eating or completing all the explosive. And now the beauty is they can recover most of the explosives and then they can save their, you know, the rockets. Because earlier days too, it was harmful also for humans to do the explosion, to degrade them. But now this is a good option, they have found out. We did one study now, they're going ahead with much, much larger quantities. You must have known this insect that's called dung beetle. It's known to take care of the entire dung pads which fallen on this. So the half digested material is fully converted by these guys and the, the strength, what these guys have is equal to the strength of an Hercules. So that's what it is said, that it can really push this ball of dung and without seeing where it is going but just with the orientation of the moon, it can take this entire ball towards this origin, towards this destination. So that's something very interesting about this insects. So what is the way or how it can push this entire ball? If similar kind of earth and other ball, if I tell you to push, it is very difficult for you physically to push that ball. It could be more than hundred times more than your capacity. This is one beautiful picture of a butterfly wing which is being blown three thousand times magnification. So this is just one scale of a butterfly. You can see beautiful arrangement of the scale and when the sun rays fall on it, because of the reflections, you see the beautiful colors on these butterflies. So you can see the typical rim kind of an arrangement inside a single scale and this has been blown magnified to fifteen thousand times. So that's what a particular butterfly is when, so when you see a butterfly, if it changes its, when it's resting. So at one angle, if we see that butterfly, slightly if the butterfly changes its resting position, so you'll see there is a difference in color because of the reflections. And reflections happen when the light falls on these ribs and the ribs are inside, present inside the scales. So then now for the fashion industry, can we have something similar kind of an? So then now for the fashion industry, can we have something uh similar kind of a design for the robes which we have? And they can present the robes, the the future, you know, the designs based on these kind of uh. Uh ideas where it could be a unique one and the fashion industry can really go in glamours because of this. This is a beautiful, you know, what pigment can do or how the beauty of insects is or the nature's beauty at its best. Uh here you can see lot of beetles and lot of color combinations. So a lot of designs. And that's fascinating. So a lot of the, I mean, why this happens? Because the insects would eat certain uh pigments and that gives rise to these colors. You can see these are all tortoise beetles. So beautiful uh insects. Of course, looking at them, of course, now henceforth probably we won't feel like killing them if they enter our rooms or. So so next time if you see an insect, please don't kill him, you can throw him outside. So this is one uh moth. So there's a difference in the moth and a butterfly. So when you see a butterfly. You'll see uh butterfly uh with its wings open. Uh sorry, your wings with uh with closed wings and moth is the one which we will see uh rest with its wings open. So this is a typical moth and you can see the antenna of a moth. And that's how it will try to find his way in at night. And so you can imagine our defense systems have come out with a radar to find out uh the enemy positions. But this guy can do the same job with a very small antenna equally stronger than whatever radars we have present. So they can track few kilometers. So these guys are much better with the small session, with a small size, they can track for kilometers. This is an antenna and you can see uh this is a scanning electron microscope of an antenna. So these are the pits and the bristles which have come out. They do the job of getting whatever is available information decoded and then go ahead. So this is again one more uh it's a moth antenna, earlier was a bee antenna, this is a moth antenna. So we can see there are different, different patterns on its antenna which do the job of getting information. Uh so there's some interesting uh information that if you sweat a mosquito, they may learn to avoid your scent. So this is something very interesting uh science which has come up. That uh there's a learning process in insects also. So as we learn a lot of things. So insects also do learn a lot of things. So they are, they also have DNA in them. So these guys are equally intelligent and they know what and when to do all these things. So that's how now insects are also becoming more intelligent, staying with us. So here I can, I'll just make you aware of what is acoustics. There's some kind of a cicada which makes this kind of a noise. We can have one more. So this cicada was, you know, it mimics the sound of an aircraft, you know. So it has a very different kind of an approach on the acoustics. So like this you'll find lot of insects having uh different, different. This is orchestra. So the who are the people who are into dramatics and music. So it's a. You can see a beautiful orchestra of these insects. So now hostilities on the campus can uh also listen to this orchestra at night because this is the time you're going to. Uh see the orchestra or hear the orchestra at night. And that's going to be really interesting because your campus is a beautiful campus. I've been to your campus a couple of times. And I've done the survey for insects also there and I have found a beautiful diversity of insects at your campus. Uh lovely campus especially. So this is something interesting about the acoustics. Now I'll just quickly take you around with the mosquito gossip. So here there are two species. One is the Aedes which gives uh transmits dengue. Second is the Culex which is a nuisance species during evening times. Uh this Culex is going to bother you much more. And so here is a single male. And this is a single male of a Culex. Right? So now here's a single female of an Aedes. Now this is a single female of Culex. Now you have all males put together. I can imagine a school with all kids, you know, a typical free period in the those kids are going to have. The noise which will make. These are all males and all females. You can imagine what is going to happen. So it's big chaos. So of course the, these are all recordings from a mosquito. So the different, different mosquitoes we trade and that's the different languages you can hear. And so what they speak is a really challenging job which we are doing. So now just something interesting that uh grasshopper also has a ear like what we have. And that is also present on the uh leg region. So now you can imagine a ear on the leg of a grasshopper. So they make a, so that's why they can very clearly uh hear uh from a very long distances. So there is one insect called as a cicada. So normally during summers. In your campus, you will hear the big noise of the cicadas. So you can hear them for kilometers and for a long duration. Because they will keep on making noise and because you can see this very small device on their body, the white one. It acts as a beautiful amplifier. You can see the smallest amplifier these guys are having. Right? So if you see a regular amplifier, it's a huge one device. Like we have a mic system, audio system, audio visual system. You can imagine the big uh amplifier kept on the desk. But this guy has an built amplifier. So this makes a huge noise and you can hear from kilometers. Now I have something called termites which is very common to us. But in Australia, these guys make use of these termites because termites are known to uh. Uh take inside their body the metals which are not required. So in New Zealand, sorry, in Australia, these guys would go behind the termites. They'll scan them and try to find the gold. So they will do the gold mining uh inside. Uh I mean they can, they can go for a mining. So so this is the total non-invasive method, no devices required. So they'll just uh understand what the uh termites are doing. And based on which they can find out where the gold supplies are below the soil. Artificial networks, neural networks and so on. So a lot of techniques are now coming up. Based on the uh you know insects and these are the latest trends which are coming and lot of computational intelligence. Just excuse me, I have some very, someone has come. Just excuse me sir, just for one minute.
Rahul sir, you can mute yourself.
Yeah, sorry about this. Yeah, I'm back. So a lot of things now are being uh studied based on the uh. Information from insects and a lot of logarithms or a lot of networks in present day. It's called as a something called swarm intelligence which has been used to find out the crowding complex. Uh you know, they can, you can solve uh complex problems by this locus and locus search as well as. So a lot of algorithms being designed on basis of these insects. Uh so what happens with honeybee is it can hundred and ninety times per second. It can beat its wings. So you can see the the machine, that this is supposed to be the fastest machine which is doing this job. So a lot of things you know, they are trying to understand. So in deserts, you will find uh the beetle works. Of condensing the air and preparing water. So whatever present technologies, if you find in the desert, they'll have big harvesting units where they collect water. So the entire idea was uh used by from this insect. Uh physics and engineering put together or studied from hands. So you'll find the defense guys will be using this kind of a quick assembly of a bridge. Very quickly, how can you assemble the bridge? And it's called as a self-assembly behavior. So there's a logic which is built. And so the bridges which are built by the defense or bridges which are built by the local, you know, the hanging bridges and all. So the entire technology is based on the logic or the engineering based on the hands. So in Zimba Way, we have one entire shopping center which is built based on the termite mound. So this is very interesting and there's a lot of savings being done because of the ventilation. Technologies being used or mimicked from the termite mounds that is really, it's a fascinating thing. You can build an entire shopping center. I don't know. So in India, do we have these kind of things? Or the airports because uh you know we cannot uh uh. Uh you know, there's a lot of crowding presently. I mean, now post-COVID, now every flights will start everywhere. So it is supposed that Heathrow Airport is the crowdedest airport. So how to manage without, you know, having any accidents between the airplanes? Uh we did one wonderful uh part over here is uh using insects to convert hazardous paint waste. So that's a successful project we did in Bajaj Auto Limited and we could. Or acceptable fertilizer grade uh you know fertilizer grade uh manual. So that was the biggest achievement which we could do using insects. Also now I'll just very quickly touch upon the other side of the uh insect. Uh insect world that is the dangers which we are having presently. So the pesticide effect everyone knows, the cell phone radiations have really marked on the decline of the populations. And then there was one, you know, article in the New York Times Magazine on insect apocalypse. That if insects will move from here, then what is the next? Because and India is still, you know, very in front in all these studies and whatever the data was published globally. There was no survey from India where they could use in the study because nothing has been done and we are still in front in all these studies. And that's the really sad part for us. Uh because of lot of uh you know insect turbulence in the pest management. So very recent this uh Yavatma thing had happened. Uh because they were not able to control the pest populations and they're, they went in a lot of cocktails and that was the sad story. Uh climate change, everyone talks about this is now really taking a toll on insects also. Because they are getting much more hungry than earlier times and they are causing more crop losses. So this is one very alarming situation for us and we need to really think on those lines. Because if they start becoming hungry, so then we'll be hungry because they'll eat everything what our food is. And then we'll try to pour a lot of pesticide and that is going to come in the system and total imbalance is going to happen. So what's declining, is causing a sharp decline in insects and it, why is it a big, you know, concern and matter to understand the diversity of insects? Uh because there's a lot of decline which they have seen. On other side, we are seeing a lot of good population of insects, but it's not the only place where or a small place we need to understand. It's should be a pan-India or should be a global studies which which need to be integrated together. See, there was one, UN guys have already given a sharp warning that Indian farmers are going to. Go in a hell because of this fall army worm pest which is very recently entered India a couple of years back. And now they are coming out with, now they have a real problem because nothing can stop them. At present because of the, they are becoming as an invasive species. So there's a concept called as invasive species also. And so here we have insect apocalypse where now. It is sounding that the freshwater thorets are coming up than the terrestrial ones. Because the terrestrial ones are getting uh declined first as compared to the aquatic ones. Uh very recently, we had something about this locust guy who had entered India and he had so many. Uh videos running here and there because they have entered Mumbai, they have entered Dhar, they have entered this, they have entered that place. Entered Madhya Pradesh, entered Nagpur, entered there. But I don't know how many have physically seen these locusts. So locust is something which is a. Uh I'm a grass, single, simple grasshopper turns into a locust. So that's a trigger hormonal change which occurs. And that's called as a gregarous phase. So more than twenty seven percent rise happens in their body. And they become like giants and they start moving right from Africa to Indian regions. So that's the kilometers they would travel. Together and they would reach India. So every year they reach Chhupur and Gujarat regions. And then they are trying to control them in that region. So this year unfortunately they started moving ahead. And we could see the presence. So there's one concept called as invasive insects in India. So that's a big story because most of the invasive species have come from abroad. They have stayed here, they have established, they have. Multiplied and now they are on high because uh and that especially in the agricultural areas, we'll see this kind of a situation. So like what Corona has done, Havok. So similarly, there is forecast that if we really don't study or don't understand the insect life. So this is a feature, what is going to happen for epidemics and insect. So, this is a future, what is going to happen for epidemics in insect populations, especially the agriculture ones. Now, very quickly, I am taking you around with, for the security people. So, they will be seeing all these insect species. Jodhe security wale ahae, teni ahae patraa, ase zor insects bhagundhava, tumwala jayen jistin techi, naavl lakshad rahele tar kiwa. Whatever, how you can control, I mean, understand them basically. So, here are some of the very common insects which we see. These are, this is called a cricket, the black one is a cricket, then you have grasshopper, this come all under. One particular group called Arthoktera. Then you can see so many different kinds of bugs. So, they will sting bugs, true bugs, assassin bugs, kissing bugs, so many bugs. So, they are also friendly. So, then you have, these all are pests. So, there are rapid scales, mill bugs, so which are very commonly known to us, so you'll find them on the campus. So, one, what I could do is, we can create a small, some kind of app or something where everyone can just push on or load a lot of photographs on it and we'll identify what it is and where it was found. So, something like this, we can have our own database of insects. So, you can call it as an insect bank. So, this is a kalya tara, this is all beetles actually. And you can see so many beetles. Out of the seventy percent of the total insect world, thirty percent are beetles. So, again, that's a huge number for beetles. Then you have butterflies and moths. You can see a wonderful, so many varieties, so many things, you know, beautifully they have been placed. And everyone has his own job to do. Then you have neuropterans who are doing this job, you can see this kind of traps, they are called as a dead trap or ant traps. Or they are called as ant lions who would kill the ants. Then you have isopteras, these are all termites. So, during the first hours, you will find a lot of termites coming out. So, that's the place where you will find the yearly, that's a period, I mean, once in a year they will come out. And you will see those two, 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 I mean, a pair of insects moving together, they will drop their wings and that's going to be the future queen. So, you can imagine the size of a queen is the size of a cucumber and the head is like a mustard. So, that's the size of a queen and every second she will just lay one egg. So, every fifteen seconds, there is one egg. So, continuously you can imagine for next fifteen years, she'll do, she'll just keep on laying eggs. You can imagine the amount of workers which are coming and they would do their job. Now, termites are bad for us because they enter inside our furnitures, but they are best people who would convert the dead cellulose into soil. And that's the beauty and that's the fastest, quickest live machine who does this job. Because no one, nothing else can convert cellulose so fast. So, in this short summary, we can have some questions before we sign off. So, I hope you have enjoyed this small session and there is much, much more to understand, much, much more to learn and so you can have some questions.
Rahul sir, this is completely mind-boggling world and I know students must be having lots and lots many questions. We will start with the chat box. So, can you just go through the chat box and let's go to the start?
Yes, so Desha is saying, sir, why are some people more susceptible to bites? And are there specific things about those humans that attract mosquitoes?
Sir, I think she asked before you explained it.
Okay, 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 fine. Then Dolly says, sir, how did we get to know that we see? Okay, there is something called as a technology called antennogram. So, what we do is, we chop off the antennas and then introduce the electrodes, platinum electrodes inside their antennas. And then we show couple of colors and lot of things. And there is an interpretation based on the responses which they give, which can tell us about the composite colors or which is the pattern. So, we have done it for bees, we have done it for cockroaches and cockroaches love angles, angles and dark colors. So, you know, based on this, we can find out what is the lightness of an insect and for what particular this thing. So, if I, if I show a Shahrukh Khan picture to a bee, so she won't respond. Because that is the interpretation, interpretation. So, we need another good amount of studies can be done in that way. So, that's basically an antennogram, it is done. And we have, sir, would you throw some light on my migration measures of locusts? So, just now, I have just spoke about the locust also. Because as I told you, every year they come to India and especially in Rajasthan and Gujarat areas. But this year, because of the low pressure created in West Bengal earlier, they were pulled. Now, the, the locust movement is based on the climatic movements and winds which blow or the atmosphere. So, you know, all these temperature and wind conditions matter much for these locusts. So, this year, they have entered inside, but I am still have a question whether people have really seen locust in different places in Madhya Pradesh or Maharashtra or somewhere. So, because there is so many videos which were viral, but I am still not so confident about whether they have really reached these places.
Sir, actually, I live in Madhya Pradesh. So, I, I also saw like more than usual, they were locusts.
Right, but whether they were locust or this was the first time we have seen a locust or whether it was a grasshopper?
Sir, they were very heavy. Actually, I saw in, while driving through these jungles areas, I saw like there were many.
Okay, because there is one person, I mean, I have seen, I will, you know, the video which had come on the, this thing from Madhya Pradesh. Are you speaking about the same video which was next to the road and the locust where, you know, in the, in the farm next to the tar road and the driver was moving.
No, sir, actually, I am, I am telling about myself, I don't, I have not seen any video in Madhya Pradesh.
Okay, you have seen with your own eyes, wonderful. So, that means, Madhya Pradesh. Okay, so now I will tell you, next two years, you have to warn the farmers because they are going to have a hell because of the grasshoppers now coming on. Because from locals, the, the phase is going to change to a grasshopper. So, next two years, farmers are going to face a problem for local grasshoppers. Because we need to warn the farmers there. In next two years, you are going to have lot of grasshoppers coming on, so you have to be on a watch. So, how are wasps able to control over insects in airport? Okay, so this wasp is something fantastic that this wasp will go and lay her egg inside the egg of a butterfly or a moth. And so that will control, it's a natural process which occurs normally in the nature. So, same thing, we are just providing it there. So, that's why the wasp will go and lay egg inside the egg of a caterpillar or the butterfly or the moth. So, you don't have the caterpillars or the moths coming out and that would reduce the food waste. So, that's how it works. So, similarly, yes, very much it can be used in farms because I started working for farmers, but unfortunately, that farmers are not so keen on going. With all these biocontrol measures, they are more keen on using pesticides. That's why I shifted my entire business to Air Force. So, this is, this technology can be used to fantastic in farms. Of course, there are few farmers who are working with us and we share, we give them lot of, you know, this kind of a biocontrol methods and they are doing fantastic farming. I will never not kill a mosquito, wonderful. Don't kill a mosquito. So, what was the question, Harish, I don't know, what you wanted to say?
It's okay, there were some comments. So, you can go directly to the Samya Sharan. How can we differentiate between bees, wasp and hornets, especially in the emergency situation where you may or may not get stung?
It's slightly difficult to differentiate actually unless you see it because the bees, wasps and hornets, everyone has a typical sting pattern. Because it would lay the, you know, the sting inside our body. So, unless, if you have the bee or the wasp in front of you, it is very easy to identify. But if it is stung and you don't have that insect in your hand, then it is slightly difficult. If you compare the response, the bees, wasps or your hornet, slightly, I would put it as hornets would be the one to be, you know, immediately taken care of first. Second is the wasp and third is the bee. But again, it depends on the responses, every humans would have because that perception is different. Because for bee stings me, for me is nothing, but if a bee stings someone else, so he may responded totally different because of depending on its physiology. So, we want, you know, the wasp will murder you, okay, okay, thank. How would the wasp would do? So, it was, as I told you, these all have a typical sting which will come out. And so, normally, see, they get totally agitated because of the ammonia which is released from our body. So, it's a typical, you know, the fear which comes in us. And the fear will immediately release the, you know, the scent which our body would give. And they get agitated because of the ammonia which is present in our body or the ammonia which is given out. That's why you will find the dogs would also bark at us, they will start coming on us towards us. Once a person is, is, you know, once a person fears, so that's particularly the fear factor which attracts these and they would immediately sting you. So, if you are very calm and quiet and you will go very close to the hive, they won't do anything to you. But the moment you are scared, you start perspiring, so that is a trigger for them, they will directly pounce on you and they will start stinging. So, that we have to be very careful that if, if at all wasp or hornet or bee sticks on your body, make sure that you don't fear. And just very carefully, just pick it up with a paper or something and you can throw it out. But the moment you are scared, you try to smash it, try to, you know, throw it outside with bare hands or you try to do, do some kind of an activity which is unpleasant for them. Immediately you will get a sting from them. So, that's the way you can just protect. Normally, the moment you are in fear, you are going to have it.
Okay, so sir, I think there, these are the questions, all other are just comments. So, I would ask students if they want to ask any question, they can go ahead.
Hello, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. You told about the wasp controlling the insects and all, but how do you ensure that the wasps are like they remain in the same place of interest like airports and air bases?
Yeah, as long as, as long as they have food, they are going to stay there, as long as they don't have food, they are going to die or they will move outside. So, that's the natural tendency. So, so I am not worried about where they go. I am, my, the first concern was whether the population has come down. So, that's all. So, if I send, if I, from a farmer's end, there is a FAQ, the first question comes, when I release, my neighbor is going to get benefited. So, that's a human tendency. So, they will ask these questions.
Yeah. Okay, sir, thank you.
Yeah. Any more questions or this is my contact?
Sir, regarding the insects become hungrier now due to climate change, can you please explain that a bit more?
Yeah, see, the insect lifecycle is totally dependent on temperature and humidity. So, globally is the same story that insect development is based on the temperature and humidity conditions. Now, if the temperatures are rising, so they have to finish their lifecycle very fast, very quickly. Now, for example, a particular insect has a lifecycle of say fifteen days. So, now it would come to fourteen days, thirteen days, twelve days and within ten days, it would complete its lifecycle because the temperature, because it's more of temperature dependent. So, if it has to complete the lifecycle, it has to feed. So, it has to complete those stages. So, immediately it starts feeding quickly and it will take, consume more, I mean, not, not like, I mean, it won't go like a giant, but it would surely.
On regular basis.
Yeah, available, whatever the food is available, it will start consuming it more and try to finish its lifecycle quickly. That's why, that's a alarm from, you know, globally, there is an alarm that because of the rise in temperature, you are going to face this issue of, you know, the insects are going to consume more amount of, or quickly. That's more in the sense faster, they are going to eat whatever the available food sources.
So, according to you, what is the best way to counter this? What would you prefer?
Climatic change, so we have to address the temperature conditions globally. So, it's not just one place, though, I cannot have a air condition for entire Pune city, just to bring the temperature of Pune city down. But it's happened globally, so we need to work on area-wide systems. And that's really want to, so presently, if you see, what is the average temperature of Pune has gone beyond thirty. Earlier, it was twenty-five, twenty-two-five. So, in a couple of years, it has changed so drastically. Because I remember my childhood, the temperatures were twenty-five, twenty-two and we used to be very happy, but now it is thirty. So, there is a sudden shift in also just a matter of say forty years.
Yeah, even the seasons are changing.
The changing, right, so in October, I am getting rains today and it's prediction that next till November, you are going to get rains. So, I mean, in Diwali, we never had rains, now this Diwali and till November, you would have rains. So, we are shifting towards the tropical kind of a climate that is, is going to be really worrying from point of view of insect life. I mean, insects will be happy, but we won't be happy, we won't be so much happy.
Okay, sir, thank you.
There is one question in the chat box. How do you prevent the wasp from being an invasive species? Isn't it a manipulation of natural balance of ecology of the place?
No, at all, not at all, because whenever I do this activity, first thing is, I do the survey. Because that's the major thing, we understand what the diversity is and then only we need to introduce fixed amount of wasp over there. So, it's not just a play or something that, okay, man may aaya chhod diya, aisa nahi. So, we need to really work on that. So, every year. Programs are, we have to design the release programs and accordingly, it has been done. Because when I tell them, it is a scheduled activity because entire Air Force teams are involved in that. So, it's not just a matter of just playing here and there. So, it's a very serious activity needs to be taken up. Because, because the Air Force accepting this itself is something very different because they will not accept it so easily because that's an Indian Air Force. So, because they are not going to risk the entire flight or fighter just for all this, you know, small things. So, they make sure that everything is being thrashed out, every small thing we have considered and then only this activity is being done. So, of course, it's a very learned activity, it's not just a illiterate activity.
Okay, I guess we can stop here and if any other questions, students you have, you can text us email ID also, you can directly email him. And we are also sending feedback form to you all and you can write your questions in the chat, in the suggestion box also and I can get it answered from the sir. Also, as you see, I mean, saw just now, this whole subject is quite vast and this is just a preliminary introductory lecture. Those who are interested in specific, again, you know, insects in, some are interested in beetles, some are interested in grasshoppers or, you know, termites. So, you can send your interest in again suggestions in your feedback forms and we will be having Rahul Marathesar and in even other entomologist talking to you on those in a specific insects in detail. In near future, say in December and Jan, we will be having the second part of all the sessions which we are doing right now. So, this is a very basic introductory lecture. So, yes, with this, I thank you Rahul sir and I'll ask Prashant to take it over and go ahead.
And just before that, if people are interested, they can do projects with me because there are so many students who come and do projects with me.